Everyone, I would like to call for order the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 13th, 2021. We're doing it via Zoom conference because of the Governor's Executive Emergency Order pursuant to, let's start that again, the Nashwood School District is holding an emergency meeting pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, Section 8, and Emergency Order Number 12, Section 3. I'm going to call the roll. Paula Johnson is here, Jessica Brown.
Here.
Dottie Oden.
Here.
We also have Dan Donovan, Lisa Gingrich, Greg Rodriguez, and Shaun Smith, and Tara Cunzella. Okay, so first thing on the agenda is the Nashua Uniform Contract.
So that will be Lisa.
Yes, sorry, thank you.
That's okay. Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. In your packets, I know that you do have a memo from me on our recommendation for who we would like to move forward for the next five-year uniform contract, as well as a summary of the seven different bids that we received. And I do know that you received electronically the full bids, and I believe those are posted on the website. Just very briefly, the summary is listed in alphabetical order. There were six companies that submitted bids. One of the companies did submit two bids, one for a Nike Uniform Contract and one for an Under Armour Uniform Contract. But as you look through the Nike Contract, they accidentally inserted all the Under Armour information. But the information is relatively the same regardless of the ultimate uniform distributor. So looking through each one provides discounts between 30% and 40%, depending whether it's footwear or the uniform product, whether it's a custom uniform, or if it is more of a stock, slightly custom uniform. Each one also gives rebates or promo funds or credits towards additional uniform purchases. Each company calls it something a little bit different. So those promo totals are pretty similar, ranging anywhere from $18,000 to $60,000 in credits, meaning if we purchase an Under Armour football uniform, the amount of money we spend on that, we get a certain percentage back to then turn around and purchase additional Under Armour apparel, or equipment, or things like that. All of the different vendors and the different bids did also have team store-type situations, where our teams can pick out additional apparel items that parents and students and fans can purchase. And in all of the cases, those additional purchases also would come back to us with some credits and some rebates. You can see that most of the companies, all of the companies, have been in business for a very long time, the shortest one being only 19 years. So I would like to, my recommendation, I would like to move forward with our next uniform contract with Stadium System. Stadium System is a company out of Connecticut, but we do have a local sales representative who lives in Milford and is very responsive, very communicative, very timely. This year, for the first time, we did move our football equipment reconditioning to Stadium System. And our two equipment managers at our two high schools were just both over the moon with the level of customer service, and the process, and the products that we're getting. Because of competitive pricing, each summer, as you all know, I buy a lot of equipment and supplies for all of the teams between the two high schools and the three middle schools. And over the past several years, more and more of that equipment is being purchased from Stadium System, because they've been able to offer the lowest price. You know, if I'm buying 60 dozen baseballs that I send out for quote, and I nitpick, and if the baseballs are cheaper here, and the softballs are cheaper there, and the basketballs are cheaper there, then I'll order from three different companies. And Stadium System has gotten the bulk of our business for the past probably three or four years. So we've moved our reconditioning to them. They're getting the majority of our supply and equipment sales just because they're competitive in price, they're timely. If I order something, a lot of the time, the Stadium System van pulls up and they unload right here. Our local sales rep delivered all of our football equipment back to us the other day. So it's a very personal relationship in a collaboration and a partnership. One of the additional things about Stadium System is, in addition to the credits and promo funds that we would receive with Under Armour, for any monies we spend with Under Armour, Stadium System also offers a tiered program that we would earn Stadium System credit money. So when we're buying baseballs and basketballs and softballs and tennis balls and things like that, we would be getting some credits to turn around and then spend more money on more equipment. So Stadium System is offering that, not only the Under Armour promo, but also Stadium System promo themselves. If you think about it kind of in Kohl's cash, the more money you spend at Kohl's, the more Kohl's cash you get, kind of the same idea. So that's my recommendation. I'm really pleased. I've worked with them in different capacities for several years. The owners of the company, Mike Shop, have been up to visit us a few times, and they're, you know, they're hands-on with their company. So that's what I have to say. I could go on more, but I know you have a lot on the agenda tonight. So if there's anything else that I can do to support our moving forward with Stadium System for the next five years, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions from the committee? Ms. Brown?
So if we were to go with Stadium Systems, it says 40% Under Armour uniforms. So we're not exclusively looking at an Under Armour deal necessarily, but that's, it just means that 40% of the uniforms that we purchase will be Under Armour brand?
No, I apologize for that. So in all of the contracts, it is an exclusivity for uniforms. So we would be signing that if we go with Stadium System, all of our uniforms would be purchased through Stadium System, and they would be Under Armour uniforms. What that 40% means is whatever retail price you see, we get 40% off of that as part of the contract.
Okay, excellent. No, that's all right.
That's okay. The column is listed as discount, so I apologize. That wasn't clear.
It's okay. My other question was for the team stores. Would the gear be also branded items only with like Under Armour or whatever, or is there some variation in that?
All of the companies have a little bit of variation. So again, if there were Under Armour products in the team store, then we would earn Under Armour credits and promo. If there were non-Under Armour products in the store, which Stadium System offers a wealth of other products that we could put into the team store, then we would earn just that Stadium System kind of credit.
Let's see, I had two other questions. Just trying to remember what they were. Exclusive reconditioner, is that for safety equipment?
Yes, that is for primarily our football equipment. So that is part of the contract that they did put in. But again, based on our experience this year, I personally am fine with that. Our football coaches are happy with what took place this year, as well as our equipment managers.
Excellent. And when it comes to helmets and things like that, so I'm guessing that when they, since they have a contract for that, it goes back to the standard, which an original purchase is. Excellent.
Yes. Yeah. So football helmets and shoulder pads, they have a life expectancy. So the reconditioning, they recertify them each year that they're safe. And the reports that we've gotten in terms of how old our helmets are and why they need to be replaced, or they're safe to be reused, parts that are broken get replaced, and all of that is part of the reconditioning process.
Excellent. All right. I think, I think that's all of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the Nashua Uniform Contract?
I'll make the motion to accept the Nashua District Contract for the next five years with the company.
And the amount is $47,500?
May I interrupt there for one second? The contract itself isn't for a specific amount of money. That column was just an example to show you the comparison between the seven different proposals. So there is no specific dollar amount in the contract, because if we buy 25 teams of uniforms one year versus two teams of uniforms the next year, there's no commitment to having to spend a certain amount of money.
Okay, so you just want us to vote on accepting the contract tonight so we can continue with them?
Yes.
With an open amount for each year, for the next five years, which will be in the budget?
Yes.
Yeah, it will actually be in the special revenue fund. The athletic special revenue fund is where we buy our uniforms.
Okay. Okay. So do you want to amend the motion with no dollar figure for this to reflect for the next five, is it five years?
Yes.
Yes, and I'd like to say Stadium System will be the vendor for these uniforms.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? Brown? Okay. Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown? Yes. Okay, thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you for coming.
I think the next item's kind of mine.
Is it, that's what I was going to ask, is it kind of yours too?
Yeah, I think Dan and I are going to do this one together a little bit, but just a little bit of history. Obviously, as everybody knows, Bishop Gerton is another high school in town. We share use of the facilities. 10 years ago, there was a contract put in place when the turf at Stellus was replaced. So they paid the school district a certain amount of money each year to help defray the cost of the replacement of the turf. So what you have in front of you, Dan and I and Superintendent McKinney met with representatives from Bishop Gerton, Linda Broder, the president at Bishop Gerton, as well as, I apologize, can't pronounce his last name, but Jason, the principal, at Bishop Gerton, and we drafted this proposal. It is another 10-year deal. We, as you remember, three years ago, I believe, we replaced the scoreboards at Stello Stadium. So they included that dollar amount in here that they're kind of going to reimburse us after the fact. We are looking in the next two or three years that we will be having to replace the turf over at Stellus again. So that is a dollar figure there. So they're looking to give the district, pay the district for use of the Stello Stadium facility. The interesting thing is, they have also put into the contracts, they initiated the portion of the contract to upgrade all of the technology over at Stellus. So they are putting in an additional $15,000 over the span of the contract, most likely more upfront than anything. One thing that we have learned from COVID is people who are not able to attend games like things livestreamed. So that is part of that. And one of the biggest things is, we don't have, Pete Johnson and his crew has been so great to allow us to use their Wi-Fi, but we don't have good solid internet and Wi-Fi over at Stellus. So one of the things we talked about is that bulk of that money would be to get us that internet ability over at Stellus so that we can put in an automated camera that would livestream anytime we wanted it to. So that's basically the contract in a nutshell. Did I miss anything, Dan?
No, I think just that the last agreement that Bishop Gerton had with us, they made the last payment last summer. So this first payment of this would start this summer. So there's no break in between. They'll continue to make payments towards the improvements in the stadium, which I think is a good thing for everybody.
I have a question. How much is it for the technology to be installed at Stellus?
We don't have that exact quote at this point in time, but we had talked about, I know at one point I had a conversation with Pete Johnson over ETV, and I want to say he had told me just roughly it was between $10,000 and $13,000 is what ETV had to spend to get what they have over there to be able to do what they need to do. And I apologize if I'm misquoting that dollar amount, but it was in that vicinity to get the fiber optics over to the stadium.
Okay, so the $15,000 will more than hopefully cover that.
Yes.
Okay. So is there any questions from the committee? Mrs. Brown?
My first question is actually also technology and streaming related. If we upgrade the Wi-Fi and streaming capabilities, do we also need new audio or camera equipment as well?
So we, right now, the audio for the stadium itself, that was upgraded when we did the scoreboard project. So the audio and things in the stadium has already been upgraded. But this, last year at North and this year at South, we put in a Huddle Focus camera, which is automated, that nobody has to man the camera. You don't need a body, it just, you schedule it, and it's pretty cool because it tracks the ball by itself, and it's fully automated, and we can livestream right to YouTube. But obviously, we need a hardwired internet connection. Greg's staff has really been great with us over the past two years doing that. So they are actually coming out with and finalizing production on an outdoor camera. So as part of what we have already paid through our teams to Huddle for their instructional assist software, we get that camera for free. So we're already in the works that we're getting one of those cameras, but it's not going to do us any good until we have the internet over there to be able to use that. And the automated camera is just fantastic, because right now, again, ETV's been so great. We have a camera over at Stellus right now that North, South, and Bishop Gerton are borrowing. BG has put a camera over at Holman that the three schools are borrowing, but we need a person there to man the camera. So for example, our two games that we're hosting today, we didn't have a person to run the cameras, so they're not being livestreamed. So the beauty of the automated camera is you don't need that person. It just happens.
That's pretty cool tech. So I guess my other question, like I actually have a question for Greg. Do you think that that dollar figure sounds pretty reasonable for running the Wi-Fi?
Depends on how long the run is. So if, I'd like to see what the closest point is from where the fiber comes into the building, and then we can go from there. If it's a pole, like an aerial type of fiber on like a telephone pole, it's generally cheaper, but it all depends on distance as well. So distance is actually the biggest factor we'll see in terms of fiber runs. But just like anything, I can work with Lisa, and we can have an RFP go out, and we can bid it, because you just, you just get better offers if you have more bids, so.
Absolutely. Well, I know they have it at the Y right across the parking lot, so hopefully that makes it close. I don't know if they're across.
And once we, and once we get a fiber run in there, like we can set it up, and we can actually, there are special outdoor access points for Wi-Fi to be out there. So they're actually rated for like up to 140 degrees and all weather conditions. So I think it's a good idea. I think it's long overdue. It's just prioritizing over the past year to get to that.
Exactly. Yeah, Greg and I have spoken about it. And I do believe, I've been told that the nearest spot is in the DPW Barn area. So relatively close. But obviously, we'll work with, you know, it's our stadium, so it's a matter of, you know, I'll work with Greg and we'll go from there.
Yep.
Perfect. Like my final question was just, have you ever run into any issues over the years with scheduling games and that kind of thing, sharing the space with Bishop Gerton, or has it pretty much worked out?
We do a great job. The ADs, myself, my two athletic coordinators from the high school, and the AD from Bishop Gerton, once we get our schedules, we sit in a room and we kind of hammer it out, and we try to make it as fair as possible. Pre-COVID, we did a really great job in making sure the girls' teams, the boys' teams, each from the three schools, all had an equal number of afternoon games and evening games and weekend games, and who had to move from their normal Tuesday, Friday, to Monday, Wednesday that week because of conflicts. You know, if all three schools have six home games, we can't all play at Stellus in the same day. So, all right, well, you moved from Tuesday to Monday last time, so we'll move from Tuesday to Wednesday this time. So we collaborate really, really well together. I say pre-COVID time, we have done a really good job balancing all of that with the reality of having to leave two hours between the end of a game and the start of the next game. Unfortunately, in the fall, and then again this spring, our girls' teams are finding themselves more in the afternoon time slots because their games are just shorter. You know, a women's lacrosse game is about an hour and a half, where a boys' lacrosse game is over two hours. So we started the boys' game in the afternoon, and now we're not starting the second game much before 8 o'clock. So for that reason is why a lot of our girls' games have ended up more in the afternoon. But we, we try as much as possible to get everybody a night game for their senior night, or, you know, get those on a Saturday or things like that. So that was a long answer to your question, Mrs. Brown, I'm sorry. But we collaborate, and it all works out, and it's pretty collegial.
That's awesome. Well, I'll tell you, I was actually there this weekend for Nashville Blast. It's, Stellus is a treasure for the city, and it's not just the school district. I'm so grateful for that space. People come from all over the state, and they're always really impressed with our facility. So I'm grateful for that. I had to commend Bob over there for the job he was doing for cleaning between all the games, the stands. Honestly, it was very safe. It felt great, and it was great to be outside with the kids. So thumbs up. It's going great. You have my vote.
Thank you for that. Big shout out to Bob. He does an amazing job, and with COVID, it's been a lot more work on his hands.
I remember when Stellus was built back in 2000, when I first got on the board. I still have my brick and my names on the wall there, which I
Yeah.
But so on, would you say that the schools shared about a third, a third, a third between the three schools?
In terms of scheduling?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. You know, they've been really great. Like we get, during football season, we get Friday night primetime. They always move their games onto Saturday night, unless we're, both of our teams are away. But most of the time, you know, it's either North or South on Friday night, and Bishop Gerton on Saturday night. So we do that. They've been great in the past, but if it's too many teams, we'll just play at the school. You know, they'll, they'll back out. So if anything, I would say they're a little bit less than North and South. But it, it's relatively equal. It's definitely relatively equal.
Yeah, because I think I remember, if I remember correctly, it was just North and South, and then, what, maybe 10 years ago or something, that AD came more into playing?
Yes.
I'm like, okay, then I'm not that far off.
I believe that was the initial contract from 20, from 2011. That's expiring this June.
Okay, okay. So we need to have a motion to accept the agreement. Do we need to put a dollar figure in this, Mr. Donovan?
I think if the motion is to approve the agreement between Bishop Gerton High School and Nashua School District regarding Stello Stadium, for, you could say $135,000. If you do that, the 15 is a footnote. We can deal with that separately.
Okay.
And just to add on to that, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a special revenue fund specific for Stellus that this goes into, right? Because I know some things need that.
Correct.
Okay. Would anybody like to make that motion that Mr. Donovan just said?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I move to accept the agreement between Bishop Gerton High School and the Nashua School District regarding Stello Stadium in the amount of $135,000.
Second. Second by Ms. Oden. Okay, Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Thank you again, Ms. Gingrich. I think we're done this time, right?
I am. I'm done. I'm going to head out to crack and baseball.
Have a wonderful evening. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Lisa.
Bye, everybody.
Bye. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is the IT bids. And that's you, Mr. Rodriguez?
That's right. Which one would you like to start with? Just because we have three of them. So whatever works for you.
Why don't we start, I believe, the elementary school and fiber?
Okay, elementary fiber. Okay. So we, as a memo outlines, we had three bids, one from Connection, one from Tonnet Technologies, or TNT, GSC IT, and Fiber Next LLC. We, my recommendation for the department is to go with TNT, because they were within our proximity, and they met the requirements of the RFP. They've also done work with us in the past. And they were, they were the second closest, and they just do phenomenal work from what we've had. They're very local, and they work a lot with us just in design and reconfiguration in all of our IT closets. So it's a recommendation of the IT department to work with Tonnet Communications, Tonnet Technologies.
Okay, so we're all the bids. Are they online that we can read them?
Yeah, they, I believe, Ms. Cunzella, Mrs. Cunzella sent them.
I didn't see them.
Yep, we posted them all along with our our agenda and our attachments on our website. The reason we didn't copy them was they were 405 pages of bids this, this month. And that was a little excessive. So we are posting them. We, it's by meeting, so it's Finance and Operations, today's date, the agenda and attachments, and next to it is a separate attachment that is bids only, so that the public doesn't have to filter through all 405 pages for our, our actual packet.
And is this company that you're recommending big local?
Yes.
Anyone on the committee have any questions on this?
I don't have any questions. I just think it's nice that we've already dealt with them, and they, we know that they provide outstanding service. I think that's important.
And just, you know, just to add on to it a little bit, TNT, when we do have problems, and we call them, even if they didn't build it out, they're usually there at the drop of a hat and fixing it within the same day. That's, to us, that's, that's just one of the greatest things we could ask for, especially in IT. And reliability is huge for us. So we want to make sure as much uptime as possible.
I think that's probably important to all of us going down the line. So, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Brown, do you have any questions? No, I agree. I think the reliability sounds great, and it appears that it's only about $300 difference between that and the, the low bid and for the qualifying bids. So I think it seems reasonable, because I think reliability is something we can trust. Thanks.
Okay, now on Phase Two, Elementary School Update, Network Update.
Yep, let me just get that memo out one second. Okay, so we're working to upgrade our switching and access points in the elementary schools, mainly Amherst, Broad, Charlotte, Crisp, Maindunsable, and New Surles. We had bids from three different companies. One was Connection for $239,317. Omata, which didn't meet our district requirements, they quoted us on a different piece of equipment that, although it, it would work, but it doesn't meet our compatibility wise. So it's a different type of product. So they gave us more of an HP and Aruba. We work with Cisco in the district. So it would be two separate systems, and it just doesn't really work out for us. And RTM, or Remove the Mystery, for $197,917. It is a recommendation of the IT department to go with Remove the Mystery. Not only did they provide the best bid, but they also provided, they also work with us right now with, with our major projects. So they also provide excellent service and expertise. So that's both our requirements going forward for all of our projects.
Okay, perfect. Any questions?
I'll just say again, it's nice to be able to give a bid, and it's the lowest one, to a company that we've worked with and who is reliable and responsive to us. So I think we're fortunate to get bids like that.
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Brown, do you have any questions?
No, I'm excited. I mean, it's substantially lower than the next bid, so I think that's great.
I just want to let the record show, and I'm sorry I didn't let everybody know, Mrs. Raymond joined. I would say about 6:15. And do you have any questions?
Oh, no, not yet. So I joined, I think I was about five minutes late. It wasn't too bad. So.
Oh, no, not yet. So I, I joined, I think I was about five minutes late. It wasn't too bad. So.
So.
Um, I just was very interested in what Ms. Jingers had to say this evening. So, um, I wanted to be here for that.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
I also wanted to say, so last year we presented to the board our dire situation within the district with in terms of how outdated our technology is. We are this close to being out of that by the end of the summer. So, um, it's, it's really exciting to, just to report that back to, to this committee.
Perfect, perfect. That's great. Um, okay, and our next one is the Nashville School District Internet Service Provider.
Yep. So this one, it, it may, at first glance, it may look, um, to be outrageous, but it is a recommendation uh, of, of the IT department to stay with Comcast. Uh, one of the main reasons is uptime. And I know we, we just, we spoke about, um, reliability for the fiber at the elementary schools. But, um, there's a chart that, that I want to share that it's on the memo that I sent about, it's, it's called the nines of uptime. So first light only guaranteed ninety-nine point nine percent uptime. Um, and that's, although that may sound amazing, um, that is a significant amount of outage for an entire year. So, um, if you break it down, it's eight hours a year, uh, as opposed, and ten minutes a week, ten minutes a week. During any time could be detrimental to, um, how data is processed. Um, how, uh, data is written back and backed up, uh, and, and even if it's during operations of a school day. So, um, with Comcast, they guaranteed ninety-nine point nine nine or four nines hours of a, a, a percentage of uptime. Um, and for a year, that's fifty-two minutes of average downtime. So that's, that's, uh, that's over eight hours difference of what you're looking at in terms of uptime for a year and that's on average. So it's only an average one minute a week of downtime. So, um, again, going off of reliability. You know, is, is, is my, you know, main function of my job is to make sure that all users have uh, the ability to, to remain online, even though you, it, the price is significantly different. It's the kind of the difference between a buying a very reliable car and a non-reliable car. Wh- wh- you really get what, what you pay for and, and, uh, we've been really satisfied with Comcast. Um, and so i- in best interest of the district, I recommend that we remain with Comcast.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Brown?
So when you say they guaranteed uptime, what happens if, um, it does go down? Does that just mean it is there, are we talking about losing data or something being erased? Or are we just talking about actual internet access?
Both. So it could be both. Depends if, if, if how it's written back. So let's say, uh, we're in the middle of, uh, let's say we, we have a, a cloud solution that we're, that we need to back up and no internet is, is there. The data could be corrupt. So we want to, we, with, uh, reliable internet, you, there comes more, you know, benefits to that. So we want to make sure that if we do, if we do go with an internet service provider such as Comcast, that we are guaranteed that certain amount of uptime. Um, also with a service level agreement, they respond within fifteen minutes, either by call or by a notification of some other means. So, uh, we've, we've had very minimal service interruption with Comcast. Um, it's probably even less than the fifty-two minutes a year, but if there is something wrong, they do let us know and they, and their service level agreement is a fifteen minutes response time as they outlined. So.
Excellent. And, um, so this, just to clarify, this is for the, this is district wide cost for all of our schools. Um, and if this year we were able to make things work at Franklin Street and, um, Stellows, would this price stay the same?
Yeah, internet comes back to one spot, uh, that goes to South. So in South, it's kind of like it disperses it out to the rest of the district.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or, um, comments? Okay. With that said, would somebody like to make a motion for the IT bids for the elementary schools and fiber and we can break them out separately?
Uh, I, I move to accept, uh, to, for the district to award the contract to Telnet Technologies for fifty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Do I have a second? Second. Okay. Second. And Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
And Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Okay, the motion carries. The second proposal?
I move the district to award the contract to RTM for one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars. For the elementary school network upgrade phase two.
Second. Hey, okay, Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
And motion carries. The third one?
I recommend, uh, we recommend the approval of the contract with Comcast for three thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars per month. As our internet service provider.
Thank you. And Ms. Brown, did you want a second there? Second. Okay, Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now we have the technology fee plan, Chromebook plan.
This is something Mr. Donovan and I in a tag team, um, I'm talking about, I'm gonna start out first.
Sure. So I'll, I'll start off here. This is a, um, a draft of a, it's probably something that eventually should go to the policy committee. But it's a draft of a student parent Chromebook agreement. Um, now, if we decide to go to a one-to-one next school year, um, then something like this should probably be in place. Um, we're not a hundred percent sure we're going to do that. There's a lot more, lot more to learn over the next few weeks on, on what the plans will be for September. But, um, if we do go back and there's going to be, whether it be a one-to-one at all levels or one-to-one at the high school or middle schools, whatever that decision that is made, which I think will be made at the, uh, at the superintendent, uh, levels. Um, we would probably want to put something like this in place. Now, Mr. Rodriguez took this sort of, and, and we worked off another district's, um, process and policy to come up with this. Um, in here for me has specific questions regarding, um, you know, if there's going to be true insurance. Are we going to get an insurance company that people would then give the money to? We're gonna try to insure it ourselves. Um, the other thing is, um, if we're going to do this, how are we gonna track all of these agreements? That's another sort of challenge that we would look forward, potentially look forward to, maybe not look forward to. Um, and the other thing is some of the language in here, if you read it, you know, it talks about certain damage covered versus certain other damage not covered. And maybe Mr. Rodriguez would know better, but can you tell from damage whether it was intentional or not? Sometimes I think you can, sometimes you can't. So, um, if you had an outside insurance company, there'd have to be some, some definition around that. But, um, this had been requested by Mrs. Johnson back a couple of months ago, I think. So we sort of put it together, brought it here. It can be a point of discussion. Um, like I said, I think until we find out whether we're gonna do, if we're not gonna do any sort of one-to-one where students are gonna bring the, the, uh, Chromebooks slash desk, desktops, I mean laptops home next year, not a hundred percent sure we need it. But if we are, maybe we have something ready to go. So, Mr. Rodriguez, you have anything you'd like to add or?
Um, yeah, it, just, just going off of what you said too. So, uh, there are more implications. Um, I've gone one-to-one, uh, than just supplying Chromebooks to students. Uh, um, we have a lot of Chromebook carts, uh, around twelve hundred dollars apiece that are throughout the district. Um, you know, I'm afraid that there wouldn't be a need for the carts after. Uh, so we have hundreds of those, um, across the cart, uh, across the district. So, um, there's also leasing agreements that we have to look into for Chromebooks, uh, for renewal because that, we, we do have a significant student population. Um, you know, I, I think, like Mr. Donovan said, the next few weeks is gonna be really telling of how well this is gonna go. So it's kind of a pilot program at the end of the school year. Um, my concern with the last few weeks, uh, is excessive damage, uh, to the Chromebooks just, just by bringing them back and forth. So, um, you know, we'll see. Uh, I, I think this, this, uh, draft is a, is a start, um, to see where we're gonna go. Um, and, you know, I think we can work off of this and go from there if needed.
Okay, um, so let me kind of jump in here. Since I've been kind of pushing this since last year. Um, because we had, what was it, over five hundred Chromebooks that came back damaged? Am I correct?
Yeah, roughly, there are some, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, five hundred damaged.
We had, we had about a ten to twelve percent total loss from last year and that was just three months. So, um, I'm anticipating, uh, significantly higher number for, because of the students having it the entire year.
So we're gonna have a significantly higher number this year.
Or percentage, I should say.
It's, it doesn't matter. You know, it's, it's, the damage is the damage. Um, I guess whether we get the money from the federal government, but where does the federal government get the money from? And that's from the taxpayers that comes back to us. And that means we have to repair, replace and take care of it again. Now, the school district that, is this the one that I gave you from that school district in Massachusetts?
Yeah, South Hadley, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it was, South Hadley. Yeah. Um, have we reached out to them to find out, um, how this is working with them and what have they done with the insurance? Is it an in-house insurance? Do they have an insurance company kind of backing them up? Because that's important because, you know, I, I'm afraid to see what's gonna happen this year. And, um, I know I hear from a lot of people in the community, you know, this is costing money when people have been out of work, haven't been working. They've been home taking care of their kids and teaching them and to have damage like this that could be avoided. Um, we didn't take steps on it. So are we gonna make any, um, provision on maybe reaching out to South Hadley School District to see how well this has worked for them and what they've done?
Yeah, I, I don't mind reaching out to them, um, to seeing how they, uh, seeing how this process worked. I mean, other districts in the state, um, do something similar. Um, I worked at, I'd say you thirty-nine before this. Uh, a much smaller district. Um, it, there was, there were, there were damaged devices even with those students too. So, um, I, I don't think it's a singular issue just, uh, for Nashville. Uh, but yeah, I think, you know, I, I think just getting consensus and then reporting it back to the finance and ops committee is, is, uh, you know, I don't think it, it hurt to let you guys know, um, what, what other schools are experiencing or other districts.
Well, I'm not saying it's just a Nashville problem. I think it's a problem that when it's not yours, free has no value. I was always taught that free has no value when it's not yours and you don't pay for it. The responsibility of it basically is, you know, it's not mine. Who cares if it breaks and somebody else can pay for it. And, you know, basically not only am I on the board, I'm also a taxpayer in the city. And I'm kind of tired of paying for things that people ruined that we could have prevented or had something in place for this. Um, so I'm hoping that, um, I mean, I don't care, I can call South Hadley School District. Uh, if people don't mind me calling, I can call, ask the same questions. How is this working? I think it needs to be done. I think it needs to be done whether it's one-on-one or if any student is taking any type of, um, computers home with them. We need a policy in place because the policy we had that I read really didn't put any responsibility on anybody. Parents know responsibility and the students know responsibility. The only responsibility came to us to replace it. So, um, I'm hoping that we can get something in place. So if we need it. So I guess this year, when they stop, when the Chromebooks come back, I guess it's gonna be a wash and how many got broken. So how many students in the district right now do not have Chromebooks at their disposal? I, I shouldn't say disposal, at their hands.
Um, couldn't answer that off the top of my head. Uh, it goes school by school. Um, obvious, obviously some schools have bigger need depending on the, on the, um, you know, socioeconomic situation per home and by the school. So, um, if the school, if the students didn't get access to technology by the school, um, the United Way, uh, partnered with the district and assisted families in, in gaining technology. So I, I couldn't tell you the number off the top of my head. I, 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 that, that is with schools because we, we get so many damaged Chromebooks that come back. So it's kind of like a, a cycle. So one, as soon as they come in, we repair it, it goes back out to the school.
So.
I know some schools are out of Chromebooks right now too, so.
Oh. Does every student that's being remoted right now, have they had access to some type of technology? A Chromebook, a computer or something for their learning?
I would say yes, but at least by now, yes.
But we don't know.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
I can answer that in the beginning, when we were first rolling out remote, we were getting calls from parents and or, um, uh, teachers saying that, um, kids were, you know, they had multiple students that didn't have access. And I can, uh, a hundred percent confidently say that I have not had a single phone call probably since the beginning of the year about a student that doesn't have one, nor have we had any complaints from any of our schools or principals. So I would assume at this point that everybody has a device, um, because I'm, I'm pretty sure we would heard, we would have heard.
Okay. And so when these devices come back, we're gonna get a complete inventory again of how many were damaged? And how many are usable and workable?
Absolutely.
And how many of, of the new ones were damaged and how many of the older ones you used once were damaged?
Uh, we can sort it out by model. We can do that.
I mean, I guess we need to know, you know, of which ones, you know, of the new and the older ones are damaged. Because the older ones are gonna be harder to fix and whether or not we're gonna need them and just have to replace them with new ones.
So it also, just going off the old and, and new, and I know Ms. Raymond had her hand raised, so I don't, I don't wanna just, just wanna make that note. So, but, um, as I said last year to the committee, um, we had a Chromebook problem before, before COVID happened. Um, we have thirty-four hundred, uh, Chromebooks going out, um, uh, end of life in June and then another twenty-one hundred next, uh, September. So it, it, we made sure that the Chromebooks that initially went out this, this time around were the older models. Um, so we weren't gonna be replacing them anyways, but that doesn't mean that they, it gave free rein to damage the device. They were still repaired because they were still in use. So, um, the older models, when they do come back, uh, with the recent orders that we made with Chromebooks, they, those will be replaced and carts will be built back up in the classrooms.
And has our order come in for all those Chromebooks that we ordered?
Uh, no, not, the partial orders have come in.
Okay, so we've basically gone through the school year without having all the Chromebooks come in. Is that it?
Correct, yeah.
And we ordered one seventy-five.
The order that, the order that was put in, in August, September, uh, tho- those just started coming in now, uh, within the last week or so, so. And the recent order for thirty-two hundred, those should be coming in in the next couple of weeks, next two to three weeks, I should say.
And the order we put in was for seventy-five hundred, I think, the original one?
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred and now another thirty-two coming in?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Ms. Raymond, did you have a question or comment?
Um, I just wanted to, uh, piggyback on Ms. Cancela's, uh, response to your question about how, about students having access to technology. Um, part of our partnership with the YMS, with the YMS here, with the United Way of Greater Nashville, um, was they had a Learn United program and they gave out four hundred and fifty Wi-Fi hotspots and seven hundred refurbished laptops or Chromebooks. Um, so that reached over, um, nine hundred students, um, to make sure that nine hundred families had, um, at least one laptop. Um, but in that case, mo- many of them were for the, another student so that more than one student in the house had one. And then. And then 450 families got Wi-Fi hotspots.
Well, that's good to know.
It was, it was a huge undertaking.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was. So Mr. Donovan, this is just for informational purpose on this draft of the insurance, the agreement, the Chromebook agreement, that you don't need to vote on this?
No, I don't think we need a vote. I think, you know, we have to see what happens over the next, you know, six to eight weeks with the returns. We'll learn more about, you know, what's the plan for September and what does the, the leadership of the district from the curriculum superintendent side want to do going forward? You know, we really have to get our cue from them and then we can sort of move forward. But I think with this as, as a draft and a, and a template, we can use it. So if we need to react, we can, we can do it within a reasonable amount of time.
I think that I was just going to say that, and maybe contact South Hadley School and find out how this is working for them and, you know, if they use an outside company or not. Because we really need to have something like that on hand just in case, just in case. Ms. Odin?
Thank you. I, I was just wondering, does this need to go through the legal department in the city?
I don't know if it would need to, but we could certainly send it over there.
I can give a ballpark. So last year, the beginning of, of COVID, we were handing out Chromebooks. We did get a quote for roughly 1,200 Chromebooks to be covered and and Mr. Donovan, correct me if I'm wrong, it was like 30 something thousand dollars just for 1,200 Chromebooks, right? It was a significant number for that amount, so.
That's, we, I did talk with risk management over there and basically they said the insurance is too expensive. We'll self-insure it through the city self-insurance fund. As it turned out with the CARES Act money that came in, that's what we used for the repairs. So we didn't need to reach into the city self-insurance fund because there were other federal funds available for this.
Well, I, I was just thinking, can we, is this legal to have parents sign this and take the responsibility? Because supposing they don't want to sign it, they don't want to pay for the insurance, what happens then?
Well, I guess that, that's, that's a good question. You know, what would the district decide? If the district decided, let's say all high school students will have a one-to-one, the parent won't sign this. Will the student be allowed to take their device back and forth from school to home? That's, you know, maybe we just say, well, if you don't sign it, then you can only use your device in school. But that's really not my decision.
Uh, that's why I, things like that. I like the legal department to look at this to, to make sure where enforcement is and where, where we're putting people if they don't want to sign it. You know, everybody's allowed to a free and appropriate education. So I, I would personally like to see it run through legal.
Yeah, we could do that. I mean, I know like Wyndham High School has a one-to-one program and I haven't heard that they have any parents that, you know, have rejected that using the device. But then again, I don't know what's asked for them to sign either, but.
Yeah, students are also allowed to bring their own laptops in and put them on our network as well. So if they, if they wanted to not use a Chromebook, they, they didn't have to.
My understanding is Wyndham's a lot smaller and it's a fairly wealthy community, so.
You are correct, Ms. Smith.
That makes, that makes a difference. Thank you. Thank you.
But I guess the question then bears is that what other districts in the state have these contracts? Because the Chromebook or their computer is the property of the Nashville School District.
I mean, I think it, I think the question that we, we should be asking is what comparable districts have this in place? So that could be a Lowell, that could be a, a Lawrence, a Manchester and to see what, what is being used in those districts. Because just like Mr. Donovan and Ms. Odin said, Wyndham may use it, but they're also a different community as well. So with, with more, with, with the ability to pay those fees, we, we do have a quite a significant free reduced lunch population for our district. So.
But on this contract, we.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I put that provision in about, if it's, if a family is qualified for free and reduced lunch, it would be a.
And we know what, there's always circumstances that we can work with.
Right.
And we do that with, with sports. We do that with a lot of bus passes that we did and uniforms. I'm, I'm sure we do in the district. So we don't leave any child out. We make sure that we treat them equally as best we can.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure people understand that. It's not that we're trying to hurt anybody. We're just trying to make sure that people understand that these devices need to be taken care of and they need to be respected. And we can't fix everything. Taxpayers can't do everything all the time.
I do not disagree with that at all.
Okay, and if you need me to make any phone calls, I'll be more than happy.
I put it on my sheet, South Hadley, right there.
South Hadley or any other school districts, I'll be more than happy. Send me the list and I'll be, I'll make the phone calls and I'll help you out. Okay. The next thing on our agenda is Franklin Street abatement. And is that you, Mr. Smith?
Yes, I believe so. So in your package, I'm not sure what Tara included, but the cover memo pretty much speaks to everything. So Franklin Street, quite a few of you went on a tour with us last week, I think it was. I pointed out some areas where we do have asbestos. A lot of it's with floor tile, but also for the, well, you all went into the boiler room with me, so I, I kind of pointed that out to you. So we, we put out an RFP through our consultant, RPF associates. And we received bids from five companies. Four of the five companies are from New Hampshire. And in that memo, you can see the prices range from 59,500 up to 163,000. I attribute the pretty wide range in pricing to how hungry those different firms were. And so the, the item number one, the lump sum price was based upon a very set amount of the abatement that they have to do. So the item number one was all the spray-on insulation in the ground in first four boiler rooms. So back in the day, that's how they they protected the, the iron so that the beams and everything were sprayed on insulation while that can contain asbestos. They also ripe, wrapped the pipe insulation with asbestos-containing materials. The boilers themselves were wrapped with asbestos. All these things were in for insulation and for fire protection. So that's for item number one. It was a lump sum price. And then they also gave their, our, basically the daily rate. So if that's for a person day, a man day, whatever you want to call it, for them to do additional work. And I'll give you example for that. I have it covered in the memo. The preschool programs hoping to get a grant through the state to install sinks in every single classroom. And if you, if you saw, I don't know if you have the table which shows all the asbestos that was reported by RPF associates. If you don't have it, it's in that same website that Tara talked about. But some of the joint compound in the walls contains asbestos. And of course, the piping itself may be wrapped with asbestos. So it's, it's a bit of an issue installing these sinks. So I may have to have the, the winning company do that abatement. So we did receive five bids. My recommendation is to award the contract to Event, Envirovantage. They're out of Epping, New Hampshire. The amount of $59,500. In addition, I'm requesting a contingency amount of $12,100 for additional mediation at my direction. That will be primarily used for additional pipe remediation principally involving the additional sink installations. So that total comes, and I will not spend more than we have to, obviously. So it'd be a not to exceed amount of $71,600. With those funds coming from the one-time funds being transferred to our deferred maintenance account, which I am told is that approval is imminent from the alderman in the coming week. Any questions?
No questions?
I don't have any at this point.
Any other information on the Franklin Street abatement here? Was, or basically that covered everything?
I believe that covered everything.
That covered everything, that's good. Okay.
This except to say we've worked with three of the five companies and they're, they're all good companies that we've worked with. So I was comfortable with the bids that we received.
That's good to know. Would anybody like to make a motion on this?
I can make a motion. I move to approve the Board of Education contract with Envirovantage Incorporated for the abatement of asbestos-containing materials from Franklin Street follows in the amount of $59,500 for a lump sum base bid and the amount not to exceed 1,200, $1,2,100 for additional remediation work as directed by plant operations for a total of $71,600 funding to come from the one-time funds being transferred from our deferred maintenance account.
And I'd like to just amend that a little bit because at the end, Mr. Smith said the whole thing should not, not to exceed $71,600. So I'd like to put in there for a total not to exceed $71,600.
Yes, amend the motion please to say not to exceed a total of $71,600.
Okay, perfect. And do I get a second? Ms. Odin? Perfect. Mrs. Johnson will vote yes. Mrs. Odin?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, perfect. That was easy, huh, Mr. Smith?
It was very easy, thank you.
You're welcome. The next one is the Elm Street roof update.
Yeah, so this is just strictly a report. There's no motion or anything required for this. It, just to let you know something that went on and you probably weren't even aware of it. We, is that, a memo was included in your package. Actually, if you look on the photograph on the flip side of the memorandum, you will look, look at something that appears to be waves that you might see in the North Atlantic Ocean. So that's actually the, the rubber membrane on the roof. And we were alerted to a situation because we had a roof leak on Friday, March 19th. So we sent a crew up there and, and found the roof membrane totally rippled. The ripples were as much as three feet. What happened is the wind got underneath the rubber. Did exactly what you see in the picture. It was so severe. You probably remember some really windy days back in March. It was so severe that we had these big concrete preformed blocks or on the parapet walls that, that probably weigh 150 pounds each. Those ripped off the walls and, and those was actually helped, helped to hold the rubber membrane in place. So it was really some, it wasn't a tornado, but it was quite some power. So we got ahold of our roofing contractor, by the way, is Viking Roofing out of Hollis. And they, they did a tremendous job. We got ahold of him on Friday. By Monday morning, the job was complete. They had to bring in a crane. They put brand-new rubber membrane. The, the prior roof was what they call a fully adhered and glued down. They, they put the new rubber membrane down mechanical, which is basically nailed into the roof. And we did not put those blocks back down. We, we used a different method just as good. So that work was completed because of the nature of the, the damage. One of those acts of nature. We notified the city's risk management department. They agreed to cover the cost. We just got the bill today. It was in excess of $22,000. And that was sent to risk management. So this is just letting you know what, what happens sometimes and it's all taken care of. Any questions?
I, I have one. Did it do any damage inside? Did the water get inside the building?
Not real, not, nothing significant.
Okay.
Some, some ceiling tiles got wet. You know, it's, it, it happens every year in some schools. You get wet ceiling tiles, we replace them and no, no educational materials that I'm aware of got damaged.
Okay, thank you.
Too bad it couldn't last till the new junior high is built, the new middle school, huh?
Yeah. Two, two more years.
Two more years, just wouldn't last any longer. Anybody else have any questions?
That, that was actually kind of going to kind of be my comment, actually, was that it's a bummer it didn't last longer. But I, and then I guess my follow-up question is, do you feel like it's pretty secure for another couple of years that it won't need to be replaced when they inspected it? Yeah.
Yeah, but that was my first, can we just take the old membrane and stretch it back and hold it down with some tires? You know, so that probably wouldn't be fair to whoever bought the building though, you know, it's.
Now they can feel good about it.
Yes.
No other questions, no other comments? Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Sure thing. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. And Mr. Donovan, quarterly credit card update?
Okay, so each quarter, we share with you the spending on our credit cards. What, what you have in your packet this time is the, the full year of 2019 and comparing that to the full year of 2020. So you can see that 2019, we basically spent twice as much as we did in 2020. Probably a lot of that was related to COVID. But the, the largest items that we changed in 2019, we spent about $22,000 on advertising. We sort of changed that around. We changed a couple vendors. This year, the credit card on advertising was only 5,000. So there was a $17,000 reduction there. And then in, in 2019, prior to COVID, there was some conferences and some travel, whereas this year that was a, a very small amount, obviously. So that was a difference of about six and a half thousand. So you put those together, that pretty much talks about what the change is. So as you can see, in the 2020, we're still spending money monthly on advertising and sort of on equipment and things like that that we could get much, much cheaper and not, not with, with one of our current vendors. As we said, we don't like to use the card a lot. We'd rather people go through the regular purchasing system with, with, which has controls in place. And I guess that's the reason for this report in the first place. So any questions on this report?
I do. So we saved $21,020.73 from 19 to 20.
Well, we didn't save it, we spent less on the credit card, yes.
Okay. Well, to me, that's kind of like a savings. You know, if you didn't spend it, then you, that is a savings. Okay, so do you feel that anything in this report is going to really change for the next budget year?
For 2021, probably not, because I don't think that there's going to be much travel this calendar year. The conferences that are being done are, there are some conferences being done via Zoom, but certainly not as many as, as previous. And so, yeah, I think you'll probably see 2021, 21,000 or less.
So the conferences by Zoom, are we, do you still have to pay for them or are they, or less the conferences, less costly?
They're, they're much less costly, yes. I mean, they can run, you know, it might be $150 for a Zoom conference where if you went in person, it'd be $600.
And the travel, because we're not paying for travel. So I'm going to touch on that quickly, although we don't have it this year. Last in twenty twenty and probably won't have it this year. On the travel. So when people go to conferences, we're paying the airfare and we're paying the hotels.
Correct.
Okay, I remember talking about that a while back. And so when they come back from these conferences. Are they sharing this information with other teachers or anybody else in the district?
Typically, yes.
Okay. And when they go and travel, are they getting the, did they get the best price on the airlines and the hotels type of thing?
Yes, a lot of times the hotel will be linked with the conference. So there's a discount price at the hotel. Depends where it is. I mean, if they were go to a large city, they could shop around for other hotels. If they went to a, a site that was further away, there weren't as many hotels, they'd stay at that, at one hotel with the conferences.
And I guess what would be the length of the conferences that they would be at the hotels for? Would it be like a weekend, a week?
Uh, typically two or three nights.
Two, three nights, so thirteen hundred dollars, sixteen hundred dollars. That represented like one, one person for the night.
Well, that's probably more than one person. That could, that could be, could be multiple people.
Okay. I'm just like keeping an eye on that. Do we need to make a motions? This is just for information purposes only.
This is just information. You get this most, most quarters, you'll get it.
Okay, just want to double check. The next thing on the agenda. Is, um, members' questions. So.
Yes, so there were two questions. Uh, the first one was related to the boardroom and the technology required. To have individuals in the boardroom and individuals on Zoom. This is a paragraph. I reached out to Pete Johnson. Uh, most of this is cut and pasted from an email he returned to me. So as you, as you can see, to, to, to get the full upgrade, to make sure it works. It could be as high as fifty thousand dollars. There is no, that's his estimate. He did not go out and get a, a specific quote on that. You know, now that, but now that we are going back to the boardroom, May twelfth, sometime in May. I'm not sure if this would make, make a lot of sense to spend this kind of money, uh, to have meetings. Just buying the cheaper, uh, version of this, which you would have a mixer. You'd still deal with a lot of echoes, just like if you've ever been on a, a Zoom call with the two computers in the same room. And it's pretty annoying. Um, so you might deal with a lot of that. So I don't think there's a cheap answer to getting this done. And I guess the question would be, do you really even want to look into it? Since it's that much money and the plan is to return to the, to the boardroom, so.
Mrs. Brown?
Fifty thousand dollars was more than I was expecting to do a full upgrade. However. I do think it's worth some consideration, maybe even I could see this being a fund. Related to COVID costs because I don't, even though the board is, we're going to be returning to. In-person meetings very soon. I think that there is a chance that, um, there could be other surges or other reasons. That members may choose to stay remote or go to remote at other times. I feel like there may be an opportunity here to upgrade the facility, not only for us, but maybe even for students. To be used for, um, teaching purposes as well. I, that's my question, uh, which leads me to two questions. If we were to consider some kind of an upgrade, and number one is. Has, has there ever been a really substantial upgrade on that technology since the installation of the boardroom? And number two, if we were to make, thanks, Tara, go ahead. I'll, um, I'll, I'll ask my other question second. Go ahead.
Actually, they upgraded that room. Was it six years ago, Dan?
And I think it was less than that, but yes, in the, in the last four or five years, it was upgraded.
It was relatively recent.
So that was for the audio equipment and the projector, correct?
Correct. Audio, video, the wall plate, um, I believe the sound system as well.
And we didn't do, did we do any kind of, um, I mean, well, I'm guessing we probably didn't because we just did the switches and the wifi upgrades and. The school's just, we're doing that now. So, um. In regards to the technology that's been developed in the last six years, I mean, six years is better than sixteen, but, uh. It's also come a long way, especially with the way tech and, um, remote meetings are. Really constantly being upgraded and modified right now. I think there is some real benefit potentially down the line, not just right now, but over the next three to five years on something like this. My second question is, if we were to do, whether it be a small switchboard upgrade or a full. Overhaul for making digital interactions easier. Is there a, would that equipment belong to the school or would that belong to, um, the access AV?
I would say that would belong to the school, especially if it were, if we paid for it. With school funds, whether they're cares funds or any funds, yeah, they belong to the district. But you'd obviously have to work with. CTV to make sure that it, it works for them. So if we were to look into this, that certainly would probably be something Greg Rodriguez and, and Pete Johnson or somebody at CTV would. Would work to put together.
And, well, I, it's, I know this is just like the beginning stages, but I think that there's potential in. The equipment upgrade for CTV, making it easier for, um. The constituents to access the meetings, but also maybe there's even potential for broadcasting, um, different types of things for our audiovisual. CTE, um, department, that kind of thing. I don't know. So that's my opinion on this. I know it would be fledgling stages of the contract, but. I would be game for finding out more.
Now, would the Cazac money cover any of this?
Possibly.
Possibly.
You know, it's, it's one of those. People ask that question all the time. Would the Cazac money cover? Does I get that probably on a daily basis now? Um, and typically the answer is possibly. You'd have to put it in as a request, write it up and, and the state would respond.
Well, I guess because we still are under the executive orders on a lot of things here. And even if we go back and if the governor decided to shut us down, which I hope never happens again. Um, then, you know, upgrades, um, you know, I agree, maybe we could find out. Um, if this might, is there any way for you to find out whether it might?
Yeah, I, I could might, yes. I could get a might answer, which obviously you wouldn't want to start spending the money.
Right.
Till it was more than a might. But I guess we could look into it more. I think probably having a, some sort of a meeting with CTE, CTV and, um, and the IT department at the district and maybe at the city. So that, I think that's probably the first step.
Well, probably because this way we can get an idea if it's a feasible thing or we just don't do it at all. I think Mrs. Brown made a good suggestions. Any other comments about this? Questions? Mr. Smith is gone, but I'm sure you could probably answer this, uh, Mr. Donovan. So with the Fairgrounds Middle School, so how many custodians do we have over there right now?
I think when they're in full, I think they have. Six, but they've been down to about four and a half most of this year. One of the people. That. Works at Fairgrounds, works half-time at Fairgrounds, half-time at Central Office. Um, since Central Office went back in September and we've been back every day. Uh, we basically have used a lot more than half of that person's time. And then there has been, uh, one of the other individuals over there has been out. Medical reasons, et cetera, for over a year. So, um, I think it's about four and a half people.
So we've kept, well, with the renovations, how much are they really, you know, doing the cleaning like you would if you didn't have the renovations?
Yeah, different, different kind of work. Um, in speaking with the individual who works part-time there, part-time at our building. He, he would rather work in our building because it's every day, it's something different. Um, they're dealing with a lot more dust, a lot more. Cleanup, things change every day. If, if you recall this year, we were going back and they weren't going back. They had a plan in place. Then they decided to increase the speed, try to get it done sooner, so they moved things around. So there's been a lot of work for that custodial group. That's changed on sort of a week-to-week basis. And it's a lot of moving, you know, moving the furniture around. We're going to do this wing. Nope, now we changed our mind. We're going to do the next wing. So. It's been sort of a, sort of an up and down year over there.
Yeah, I guess so. Okay, thank you for the information. Any questions on the, um, members' questions? Okay, the next thing we have is the financial report for March of two thousand twenty one.
Yes, so we'll start with the month-by-month report that we've been going over. So page. Page one, I think it's in the second, second of the two financial reports. I have. Excuse me. I've started working on my, um. Forecast. I've got the new forecast set up. And I have all the data in through the month of March. Now I have to do the actual. Forecasting from April through June and the summer costs that need to be brought back. So with the next finance and ops, I'll have the first forecast of what the operating budget should look like. So basically, just looking quickly, salaries and wages, you can see wages fallen part-time. The numbers are pretty close to what they've been the last in January and February because they've been the same amount of pays in those months. Four weekly pays, two bi-weekly pays. Overtime number in, in total. Is, uh, just for this month, it's nine thousand. Year-to-date spend is only thirty-three percent. So this is an account where we'll have some savings this year. Uh, the main reason for that is that we're not doing any rentals. This school year and there's a lot of overtime related to rentals. So, uh, that, that's, that's not going to be in place. The, the nine thousand in overtime this month, most of it, there was about twenty-five hundred related to the South. Uh, High School, which I think was mostly related to the COVID site, which by the way, has now moved down to the Sears. The old Sears stores in, in the, uh, in the, in the mall, Pheasant Lane Mall. And then there was probably about three thousand or so for callbacks, which are part of the custodial contract. When something happens and you get a call, they get, they get a minimum of three hours. So that's what's there, but in total, there should be some savings in that account. The wages seasonal, that's for a temporary custodian that we hired, the twenty-eight hundred. Um, wages per diem, you'll notice that's for the subs that we're paying. That number's higher than it's been, um, all year. Not significantly, but higher because obviously there's more students back in, in the buildings. The longevity, there's a minus five hundred. That's already been corrected. If I had run this report today, it wouldn't have been there. So that was an adjustment that was corrected. Um, stipends, you'll see, that's, that's a high number. There's two things in there. There's the winter coaches at the two high schools. And in the paraprofessional contract, there's a, uh, a no child left behind stipend of. Certain paras that have been in the district for a while. It was put in the contract probably, I don't know, twenty years ago, I think. It's two hundred and fifty dollars a year for each one of the pairs that qualifies. It's typically about, uh, fifty-five, sixty thousand dollars. So that payment was also made in the month of March. And the, uh. Retirement and separation pay, that's, that's a couple of, a, a para left and a custodian left. And that's the three thousand there. Okay, fringe benefits, like I said, mostly managed by the city, costs transferred back and forth. Professional and technical services, accounting and auditing, that's the first payment towards the Student Activity Fund. Um, they billed us about half. That total should be fourteen thousand five hundred when we're done. Legal services, as you can see, uh, year-to-date is a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. We've had to make lots of transfers into that account to pay all the legal and a very high legal year. You'll see next month even more legal costs, things that you've probably been made aware of in, in non-public meetings. But that's, that's just, hopefully something is, is a one-year thing, really has to. Can't afford these sort of legal costs going forward. Other than that, the rest of the items on that, uh, page are, are tracking along according to, uh, plan and according to budget.
Uh, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
On, um, what is it? The retirement and separation pay?
Yes.
Do we have a lot of retirements coming up?
The teacher retirements, um, are about the same as they were last year, from what I can tell. I think it's in the low twenties.
Okay. Okay, I just want to double check. Thank you.
Okay.
Actually, are we asking questions as we go? We had something?
Sure, you can ask on any, yeah, that, on that first page.
Um, I got a question about the, uh, wages per diem, which is, you said was related to the subpay. Do you feel like the eight hundred thousand that's remaining in that account is going to be sufficient with the extra needed subs?
Definitely. We won't be able to get enough subs to spend eight hundred thousand.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sure the principals would love to spend that money to get, they're not going to be able to find them. That'll be another account that we'll have excess money in.
Thank you.
Okay, page two, uh, property services. The electricity account is much lower than where we were at the same time last year, about four hundred ninety thousand dollars. If you recall, at the end of last year, we had some excess funds. We paid down the smart start contracts. So we're starting to see those savings. The heating gas, uh, that's actually as of through March, it's about fifty thousand higher than where we were last year. You'll notice the month of March is two hundred and forty-four thousand, which is very high. Um, but what that is doing is catching up. If you look back in January, you'll see that the number was much lower. So the bill's gone a little bit behind. Um, a lot of that was due to the person that inputs the bills into the energy management system was out for a few weeks. Um, now we're all caught up, so I think you're going to see that, that level out the rest of the year. And when I show you my forecast, we'll have a better sense of that. Water is running, uh, a little bit less than last year, but doing, doing fine. The rest of those accounts, uh, H, the maintenance accounts, uh, contracts. Those are all, uh, sort of moving along according to plan. Don't seem to have any issues there. And then other services. The telephone, um, if you look in, in, uh, February. There was that large telephone invoice of fifty-one thousand and then this year, this month, it went back down to seventy-seven hundred. I spoke to Mr. Rodriguez earlier in the week and he's looking into, we're supposed to be getting that, uh. E-rate credit for that fifty thousand. He expected it to be in, in, in March. It wasn't booked in March, so he was going to reach out and find out what happened. But there should be a credit to that account coming hopefully in the month of April at this point. Um, most of these other accounts, you can see small amounts, uh, some of them like travel. like travel and mileage and conferences are are very low spend percentage-wise to where we are in the year. You know, we're seventy-five percent through the year, and some of those spends are seven percent, twenty-two percent, thirty-eight percent, so certainly no issues there. At the bottom is the regular transportation services. And that's pretty much caught up. I think it's one month behind right now, but we should be fine. And then at the top of page three is the rest of those accounts. Tuition out of district. I'm happy to say that based on what we're looking at now, we should come in pretty close to what's in the budget. I haven't seen that in seven years. So there might be a little blip, you never know, kids coming in at the last minute, but based on the last review we did, it should come in pretty close to budget. So that'll that'll be nice to see. Any questions on any of those? Okay, supplies and materials, most of the supplies, materials accounts, pretty straightforward. The spend is pretty much, if you look at the percent used on most of those accounts, they're pretty much in the sixty to seventy percent spend, which you'd, when you'd expect them to be at this point in time. At the very bottom, you notice subscriptions and books. The subscriptions are 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 well overspent and the books have kind of underspent, and that's I think you saw that when the curriculum budget was put forward this year. A lot of books are now being replaced by subscriptions, so because we're moving more to online type things. So I think what what sort of happened here was it was budgeted to books, but then it was actually charged to subscriptions. But they're in the same sixty-one series, so the system handles it fine. Indirect costs, the budget there is two hundred and ten thousand. We've already received two hundred and nineteen thousand. We have three more months to go, so that will be a benefit to our budget this year. Then the equipment, computer equipment is fine. The furniture and fixtures, you'll notice in the month of March, ninety-three thousand dollars, which is significant. That was the purchase of the furniture at the North High School. You'll notice in that same account where it says encumbrance commit is ninety-six thousand there. That's the other high school. And we received those one-time funds. We gave each high school a hundred thousand to buy furniture. That was approved by this committee a couple of months ago. So that's, that's why those numbers are higher than you typically see. Okay, debt service capital improvements, I mean, the capital outlay, that was the hundred and seventy thousand towards Franklin Street. And then the budget adjustments, basically that credit of three fifty-five, which is budgeted, that's going to be another sort of negative to the budget this year because it's made, that's really two pieces. It's the sports fees and it's the facility rentals. Facility rentals was hopefully going to be a negative, a good thing in our budget of a hundred and forty. That'll be zero. And the sports fees was the remainder. That was, I think we budgeted one seventy-five or one eighty due to the fact that we didn't run as many teams and we reduced that number's going to be lower. So that's going to have to be an area that we're going to have to make up in other accounts. So as I said, next month, we'll have the first run at the actual forecast, and we'll have a better sense of of where we'll be.
Is there any questions or any comments about the financial report for March? No? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the financial report for March twenty twenty-one? I'll make the motion.
I'll move to accept the financial report for March two thousand twenty-one as reported by Mr. Donovan.
And I'll second it. And Mrs. Johnson will vote yes. Ms. Odin?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Now we have the transfer report for March of twenty twenty-one. Mr. Donovan?
Okay, the first transfer, number one seventeen, as I mentioned in the financial report, significant costs related to legal this year, so we took some money from the electricity account, which is below budget and moved it into legal. That's fifteen thousand. First of, that's, that's one of many entries we've needed to make this year for that. Now, the next few accounts, you're going to notice a lot of it is the school's individual budgets. We give each school, depending on the number of students in the school, but for an elementary school between, let's say, twenty-five and thirty-five thousand a year to to run their school and all their supplies and and needs. And we haven't really increased that in a long time, but typically what the schools will do is they'll save some money for the end of the year, and then they'll use it a lot of times to buy equipment and things. So you're going to see, I'll just run through these next few, Birch Hill. They're taking money from their furniture and fixtures and conference line, and they're going to buy a few pieces of technology, probably try to buy Chromebooks, so on twenty-five hundreds. They won't get too many, but they may get a few. New Searls, basically doing the same thing. They're going to be purchasing some Chromebooks and a Chromebook cart with four thousand six hundred and fifteen. They're moving from supplies. Bicentennial, same thing, where they're moving eight thousand dollars to buy computer equipment. Nashville High School North. Same thing, they're they're buying some Chromebooks. And if you mention, if you if you remember, Mr. Rodriguez said some of the schools don't have any left, so they've been able to get their hands on some smaller amounts. Now, what I did do after I saw these back a few weeks ago, going forward, we've told the schools, no more buying Chromebooks with your excess funds. We bought a whole bunch of Chromebooks now. IT department can only handle so many Chromebooks. Every Chromebook we purchase has to go to IT so that they can update it and get it going. So there'll be no more Chromebook purchases for the rest of this year. If they want to buy some carts, things like that, they can, but the actual Chromebooks, we've kind of put a could have put a kibosh on any more Chromebooks. Okay, then the next one, item entry number one twenty-four. That is plant operations. They're taking some money from their building and grounds maintenance fund, and they're splitting it between supplies and equipment repairs and maintenance. And then there is another, the following one, number one twenty-nine, that's another transfer from electricity to legal of thirty thousand. And then there's one from Birch Hill, where they were just moving it from specific grade supply accounts to the educational supply accounts for the school itself. Typically, some schools will give the money specifically to teachers. If they don't spend it all, then it goes back to the school. And they use it for supplies for the whole schools as opposed, as opposed to a specific class. The next one is Nashville High North, the ROTC program. They typically do some field trips and things. They didn't do those this year, so they're taking those funds from transportation and using it for supplies for their programs and for their their uniforms. Then Pennachuck Middle School, moving from unused supply accounts to purchase banned cabinets. Pennachuck, once again, moving from dues and memberships to purchase a few Chromebooks. And Pennachuck Middle School, they're moving four thousand dollars from their supplies to purchase miscellaneous equipment, pots and pans, et cetera, for their fax course. That's something I haven't seen much of at all, so they must not that I'm a big cook like Miss Consella is, but four thousand worth of pots and pans seems like a lot, but maybe what do I know about pots and pans?
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Is there any questions or comments regarding the report? The transfer report? No? Would anybody like a motion, make a motion to accept the transfer report for March twenty twenty-one as presented by Mr. Donovan? So moved. Second. Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Perfect. Is there anything else you'd like to discuss tonight that's not on the agenda?
I actually had one, go ahead, Ms. Odin.
I just had one question. I don't know if you have the answer yet, but it's about the thermometers. Do we know where the two hundred and fifty thermometers went?
I do know that plant operations broke them out and and each school was given thermometers, so I'm pretty sure they're in the nurses officers, offices at each school. We do have a couple at Central Office.
Okay, which you should, and I I had understood that the coaches for the athletic teams also had received some of them, so I I'm just wondering, any idea how many the schools have?
They were distributed based on population.
Population, okay, okay, thank you. So they, the the school should have them.
They do. They were, yeah, we distributed them within a couple of weeks of getting them. I think that was in the early fall, wasn't it?
Could have been. Thank you so much.
Brown? My question was actually also donation supply related, and maybe I should have asked this when Mr. Smith was still on. But if there were any parents or community members that wanted to make contributions of any kind of supplies, is there like a list that they could work from, or is there anything that you know of in the district that we have a shortage of?
Well, thanks to the federal government, no, we don't have a shortage of, we've been able to, you know, in the beginning, we couldn't get our hands on masks, certain types of masks, things like that. Now items are pretty much available. And I think in the presentation that Dr. McKinney put together last night, he listed what a lot of that PPE was. Now, if people have the actual items and they want to donate them and sort of reach out to Mr. Smith at Plant Operations. But as far as funds to buy all those, I think, I think we have plenty of funds to buy any of that needed materials.
Good, that's good to hear.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain adjourn. Mrs. Odin? Mrs. Johnson votes yes. Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
And we are adjourned at seven forty-four this evening.